He's come a long way with his [inaudible 00:00:28].
Look good up there, Nathan.
Not sure how I feel about this mic.
I hear our picture is up downstairs.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yep, it's been up.
Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order.
Speak into the microphone, please, sir.
Try. Recognition of members. Mayor Lovell is absent tonight. We have Councillor Archer, Councillor Gay, Councillor Doyle, City Administrator, Mr. Sutherland, Councillor Copeland, Councillor Minthorne, and Councillor Smart. And I myself, as deputy mayor, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Few items under general tonight. It's a reminder that the Sauk River Corridor Commission will be holding their special public hearing on rule changes scheduled for Tuesday, tomorrow, March 5th, at 7:00 PM at the Dayton Town offices. Also, the mayor asked that I make sure that everybody's aware of the meeting schedule for this month. We will not have a meeting or a workshop on March 11th. March 18th, we'll have a council workshop. March 25th, there'll be a council meeting with budget presentation followed with a workshop by DPW and the capital program. In addition, this coming Sunday, you need to roll your clocks forward for daylight savings time. Next is the public comment period. I have John Harkins first. If you'd come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. It's totally up to you. If Mr. Shymen would like to go, that's fine.
We didn't have a school board meeting last week because of -- we wouldn't have had a quorum. We are -- will have one this Wednesday. There is a public hearing at the meeting for the budget of RADS and budget, school budget. And additionally, there'll be a performance by students from the middle school. So it'll be an interesting occasion. And that's about all I have. Any questions for anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Harkins, if you would step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
John Harkins, Workhorse Ferters. I just have a couple of brief comments. I understand that we have selected a site for the new town garage facility. And I was wondering if any borrowings have been done on that site?
Not to my knowledge, but...
Okay. I understand it's a rather wet site. And it could result in extra cost to the community in terms of substructure improvements, columns, et cetera, demucking, that type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Barbara Coleman.
Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue. Councillors, I set late today some information. First is some corrections that need to be done to the audit report for fiscal year 218. Page 69. There is right underneath the TIF, under note number nine, Chapter 260 does not exist. It should be 206. That's been verified by the State of Maine TIF department that that is incorrect, as well as a local person who deals with TIFs. Second, when I was looking at this TIF, this audit against the audit for 217, I noticed that the downtown development TIF district is in here. So knowing the amount of work that went into this, and understanding that the TIF was late in getting in there for April 1st, I went and read some rules and did some research. And I'm going to read what it says, and then I have a couple of questions that I hope will get clarified this evening. Commencement to a development program, and that's a TIF. The development program for a TIF increment financing district begins on the date the commissioner issues a certificate giving final approval of the program. And on that date, a municipality may begin expending money, funds, and incurring obligations with respect to the approved projects. An amendment of a development program begins on the date the commissioner issues the certificate, also giving final approval for the amendment and the expenditures of funds. A municipality may not expend funds or incur obligations with respect to a project cost in an original amended development program until the date the commissioner gives final approval to the original development program or amendment. So I have a couple of questions. The downtown district did not get approved until August 7th, 2018. Yet it is referred to all in the fiscal year 2018 budget. Now, we didn't get it until fiscal year 219. So a couple of questions. Did the city push aside the money and through the budget process include $184,002.84 in anticipation of paying out a TIF in that district? Or was there a waiver issued when the application was put in where the commissioner OKs that we backtrack to April 1st, that TIF? Now, I don't know because I don't have a copy of that letter. I'd need to ask somebody to verify that. If not, then all this accounting that has been done on this TIF and spent out, which is $204,000 and change, should not have occurred until 219. We are also showing a deficit on this TIF of over $20,049 going into this fiscal year 219. So I'm really asking for clarification on that, as well as, and I have sent you Audit 17 as well as Audit 18, the respective pages. You will also see the downtown, not downtown. Sorry, I'm pointing because I'm thinking of the place. Maine Mallecular. You guys now call it something else. Maine Mallecular ended the year last year with $15,545. Yet when you come to the audit, back to the page 69, Millbrook Maine Mallecular, zero. And Maine is not spelled correctly. It needs an E in it. So this is material. It's material because it's almost $200,000. It's also material if we spent something and we don't have a letter from the commissioner giving us approval to spend before August the 7th. And if we spent the money, and I will be getting a copy, then it's on you as council to resolve the issue with the respective parties that oversee this city. And I will be getting a copy from the commissioner because I have forwarded a FOIA request into them. So when reading the audit, it's worth really reading the audits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anyone that would wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion to accept the consent agenda by Councillor Minthorne, seconded by Councillor Smart. Thank you.
All in favor?
Councillor Archer? Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
And Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a credit enhancement agreement between the City of Sauk, Maine and Ready Seafood Company. This is something that's scheduled for myself. I will ask Councillor Doyle to read this item in.
Page five.
Thank you. Sorry, I was getting back to it. I had flipped over to read the email that we had gotten from the previous commenter. So I am back at it and I will... This credit enhancement agreement is for Ready Seafood Company as outlined in the Ready Seafood TIF District and Development Program application approved by council on February 19th, 2019, and submitted to DECD for final review. The proposal is for a 20-year credit enhancement agreement with an overall $1.8 million cap, with payments starting once the $1 million of increased assessed valuation triggering event occurs, as follows. Years 1 through 10, 70% of the TIF revenue to the company. Years 11 through 20, 60% of TIF revenue to the company. And remaining years of the district, 100% of TIF revenue remains with the city as outlined in the Ready Seafood TIF District Development Program. The CEA has been reviewed and recommended by the Economic Development Commission at their February 11th, 2019 meeting. Council scheduled a public hearing on this item at the first reading on February 19th, 2019, and the public hearing was noticed in the Journal Tribune on February 21st, 2019. Council order for this credit enhancement agreement is as follows. City Administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with the Ready Seafood Company in substantially the form as presented to the City Council. Staff supports this credit enhancement agreement and accompanying order. I move to open the public hearing for the credit enhancement agreement between the City of Sauk, Maine and Ready Seafood Company.
Second.
Motion made to open the public hearing by Councillor Doyle, seconded by Councillor Minthorne. Show of hands, all in favor. Six oh, motion passes. The public hearing is now open. If anybody's here to speak on this matter, step forward and state your name and address for the record. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading on the order regarding the approval of entering into a credit enhancement agreement between the City of Sauk, Maine and Ready Seafood Company in substantially the form presented to the council on March 25th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Doyle, again seconded by Councillor Minthorne. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes. So the final reading is now set for March 25th, 2019. Next item is another public hearing. Councillor Minthorne?
Okay, have it up in a second. The current City of Sauk Cable Television Ordinance does not provide enough detail for future negotiations with cable providers and should be modified to provide more detail. To move forward with negotiations, it is important that the ordinance match our goals and needs for the City of Sauk. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion to open the public hearing made by Councillor Minthorne, seconded by Councillor Doyle. The public hearing is now open. Forgive me. A call for a vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
And Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. The public hearing is now open. If anybody's here to speak on this matter, please step forward. Seeing none. Councillor Minthorne?
I move to close the public hearing and further move to set the final reading of City of Sauk Cable Television Ordinance, Chapter 78, for March 25th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made by Councillor Minthorne, seconded by Councillor Copeland. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. A call for a vote. Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
And Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Motion passes, six zero. So the final reading of this item is set for March 25th, 2019. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing for the revision of the City Code, Chapter 87. Councillor Archer?
Yes. The City of Sauk adopts and enforces the National Electric Code as authorized by state law. Every three years, this model code is revised in a consensus process to reflect evolving technology and knowledge in the field of electrical installations. The city currently utilizes a 24 edition of the National Electric Code while the State of Maine has adopted the 2017 edition with amendments. The city is proposing to adopt the same code edition as the state along with the same amendments, as well as some Sauk-specific amendments regulating hazardous installations and installations of high amperage services on residential properties. The Code Enforcement Department is planning a stakeholders' meeting on February 12th, 2019, when this proposal will be discussed, and any suggestions will be heard. Notice of this meeting has been sent to all electricians who obtained an electrical permit in the City of Sauk within the past six months. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made to open the public hearing by Councillor Archer, seconded by Councillor Gay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Councillor Archer?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Minthorne?
Yes.
And Councillor Smart?
Yes.
Six oh, the motion passes to open the public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak on this matter, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Broschu. 257 Buxton Road. I've been in the electrical field for the past 28 years. And this is typically a pretty much a standard protocol that we try to keep everything on a level playing field using our National Electric Code, which is adopted, obviously, typically nationally, the state, and then at the local level where we have a local inspector acting as the authority having jurisdiction. I also attended the February 12th Stakeholders' Meeting. There were approximately 15, 16 electricians present that evening. We had some intense discussion and kind of hashed through some material. My understanding is some of the stuff that's in your packet with respect to the electrical inspector's ability to order a disconnect versus doing it is going to be changed. I just spoke to the code officer a little while ago, which was some of the results of that meeting. And so we understand a lot of the local changes, which are the ones that kind of had a lot of the questions of the debate about them, is kind of a joint effort between the codes and the city trying to make the ordinances non-biased, specifically towards our Chapter 135, which I believe you'll be discussing later this evening, with marijuana grows and the high ampacities, and then the enforcement mechanisms that may go with that. Generally, we're all in support that uniformity is a great thing. However, I think there could be some adverse effects to the narrow approach that some of our local ordinances are taking. You know, could our serving utility say that we're biased to them by limiting the amount of power that a customer could use? There are electrical loads that could be used for the calculations to permit a larger amperity on a residential structure that as respectable electricians we provide. Example given, walkway and driveway ice melting equipment. We can request that and easily pass through the code's office, put the equipment in. However, as you can imagine, the equipment's only used five or six times a year when it's actually a snow event, and that capacity is sitting there and not being utilized. So multiple ovens, people that were multiple washer and dryers, large families. So I guess I kind of have some analogies. Obviously, the electrical field might be a little difficult for some laypeople to understand. Kind of look at some of these very directed, specific restrictions are, could the city limit all registrations within the city to cars that have four-cylinder engines or less unless you can prove justification as to why you need a larger engine? Proving that you have an RV or both you need to tow because you feel it's safer that they're not as powerful or as fast? Can we limit the water usage for people that want to water their lawns to X number of gallons a day? So we know that in your Chapter 135, Section 2B, it indicated that a lot of the mechanism, the response to forming 135, was because these grows were moving in without the city's knowledge. They're kind of flying in under the radar. And we see that, we see that in the electrical field as a hazard as well. And I know that we are trying to curb that. We don't want that in our, we don't want that in a city. We don't want the dangers that come along with it. And we are in support of that. But we think that the uniformity needs, as far as running a business, needs to be across the board. And so I don't think we need to have as many local ordinances specific to Sauk and to Biddeford and to Scarborough so as we're conducting our business, it's not the same page. It's like we have different rulebooks. It's like playing Little League baseball and having a different rulebook to every field that you go play at. So kind of in closing, I believe that we need to give our codes and our law enforcement the tools that they need to combat this issue. I don't think this is necessarily the most effective way to go about it. I think if you feel this might be in a very effective way and wouldn't be possibly challenged in a reverse bias way, you'd be where we may be in front of you again to kind of plug some more holes that may be created when this is through. So at the very least, if you do pass this, I would hope that one of you would make an amendment to it to say that the, put some burden on the code office so that every single permit, electrical permit that needs to get filled out, because we are not online, we have to come in and do it, that you make it a requirement that they provide a paper copy of all the city local ordinances prior to issuing that permit or for that application. That way, any contractor that comes into our community, we want to be a business-friendly community, we want to encourage growth. Sometimes when that happens, we have established companies that are coming in, they want to bring their contractor from New Hampshire, they want to bring their contractor from Central Maine. Let them know upfront, before they pull their permit, that, hey, there are local ordinances that differ from the National Electric Code. At the very least, in equality and fairness, so visiting contractors, we could do that. I think that would be a great help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this? Seeing Code Enforcement Officer Dick Lambert?
Yeah, the, excuse me, Richard Lambert. I'm the Director of Code Enforcement for the city. All right. The changes that were noted, I just sent over to the city administrator. You should be seeing them. But what it essentially does, it cleans up the disconnect notice that we had originally proposed, does the same thing, except what Jeff had pointed out during the contractors' meeting is that there is a section in Appendix H of the National Electric Code that already addressed it, and we didn't know it existed. So we just used the language out of Appendix H and brought it into our code, made it simpler. The other change that we made was we included three, whether it's a single-phase or three-phase power for the limiting amount of amperage that you can get in a single-family home. And that's to just coordinate that with our medical marijuana statutes. And that's to just coordinate that with our medical marijuana statutes so that we don't end up blowing up people's homes down the road that are unsuspecting.
Are any questions? Councilor Copeland?
Thank you. It is a concern that we have different rules than others, so instead of offering a paper copy to everybody, maybe we could somehow put a note on our application and an instruction to go to our website?
Yes, once we adopt this regulation, it'll be listed under our City Code, so everything is online, and they can check it online. We can offer a link printed on the, on the electrical permit itself. We'll just get a stamp with the link on it.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none? Ms. Coleman?
If you do do electronically, I would suggest having a signature page that says that the contractor has read the materials online, understands it, signs it, certifies it, and all of that in front of somebody, because if liability comes down the road, what document do you have in your hand that says they've actually ever read those policies? Does that make sense? You're putting in a set of rules you want signed. I want to make sure that you've read those rules. You've signed it. You're going to keep it on file here at the office. Am I making sense, or have I lost everybody in this whole crowd?
I understand.
You understand, Nathan?
Same.
So in other words, basically, we're in agreement that you want something documented proving you actually had an individual read that form and agrees to liability of it?
Yes.
Okay. Communicate that to people.
Councilor Copeland?
I was wondering if the code enforcement officer could answer our question for me? Is there language on the bottom of the permit that says that you believe and you've read everything and so forth?
No, because these are national codes. Electricians take many hours of study coursework to become familiar with them. And just like the building code, you can't be familiar with everything. You're going to need to go back into that code every once in a while to look up things. So the document, Marcel, do you have the copy? No. The book itself is about this thick, so you can't possibly know everything that's in that code book. So, you know, we trust the contractors to know that we have standards and that they should be familiar with them. If they're not familiar with them, they should ask questions from us if they have questions, or they can look them up themselves. These codes are generally available online for free. You can read them. You can't print them because they're copyrighted documents, but you can certainly access them, and we have a link on our webpage to get you there.
So if you put a link on our form like you talked about a minute ago, that would be fine, probably?
That should be fine, to at least direct them to the right place so that they can find the local ordinances that deal with this, with this, with these issues.
I don't think, are we the only town that has local ordinances that are exceptions to the, or differentiate from the National Code?
We're not the only town. I'm sure there are other towns that administered these regulations locally that have their own provisions. We used to have a provision in there for electric fences. We got rid of that. We try to be as standardized as possible to what the state has for their regulations, but every once in a while, it's good to put a cross-reference in there, and that cross-reference that we were talking about is to the medical marijuana regulations.
Thank you.
Council Archer?
Yes, I'll have you up here. Is it common in this, in your industry for there to be this signature page at the end saying, "I've read it all"? Is that common among the industry, or is that just something very specific to the?
Every town has their own permit application. I'll have to take a look and see what the electrical code. We have something similar on the building permit application, so the language is easily inserted in the next printing of our permits.
I have a question. When a new National Electric Code comes out, are electricians tested on that? Do they have to keep up to speed?
There is a code update course that they generally attend. Jeff, is it required? Fifty, it's a fifteen-hour course, and it's, these codes are reissued every three years.
Thank you.
Marcel DeRosa? Code enforcement, electrical inspector for the City of Saco. As a master electrician myself, it is, the onus is upon the master electrician to know that ordinances and regulations is part of the licensing process of the state. So if you have a license from the state, you are obliged to know what you're doing before you go out to the job and do it. As far as the local ordinances, the local ordinances we have are, I think, four. Because what we have done is we have matched the ordinances that the state, the state has exempted some stuff from the, from the code as well. So probably two or three cycles ago, when we met with electricians, they were like, listen, we'd all like to be standardized and everything else. So what we did is we adopted the code as by what the state adopts. So we are in sync with the state, that we don't have anything local. If we don't do that, then we would be stricter than the state in some areas, and it would cause more confusion. So that's one of the things, a couple of cycles ago, when we met with electricians, they said, let's all be on the same page. So that's why we adopted whatever the state adopted, boom. And there are seriously, I think, four local adoptions, two of the ones are just recently. That's it. So, and once again, as a license holder, you are obliged to know the rules. There is no signature that's, I mean, you are obliged, that's your license.
Council Archer?
Yes, follow up to what you just discussed. So if we make a local ordinance and it's a state license, if it's a violation of a local ordinance, can that actually be used against a state license? Or because it's a hierarchy of codes, a local violation wouldn't actually?
No, a local violation can be brought up at the state.
Okay, thank you.
And what I happen most of the time is if a company or an individual comes in from out of state or from not, who's not local, I'll, nine times out of ten, I'll get a phone call. What do you have locally? They'll call me, they'll ask me, because we all know, doing the job, that, okay, analogy I say is I don't stick my hand in somebody else's refrigerator without asking. So if I'm going to go to, even myself, if I go to another community, I always ask, what are your local ordinances? It's just something you always do.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Jeff?
Just like to kind of summarize, you know, it is our duty to know the National Code Book. That's what we all talked about, that uniformity from town to town. This is the book that we have to go in and out of. So every time a local community adds their own ordinances, it just kind of complicates it. And now we don't have that one go-to spot, whether you're a paperback type of guy, whether you're the online type of guy. We have no one source to get all the information, because the local community has taken upon itself. I agree. My generation, the online site is absolutely fine. However, we are in an aging trade. Over fifty percent of our electricians are in the baby boomer generation. Many of them are not tech-savvy to go and say, oh, there's a link on this permit, I'm going to go read and see what it is. That's why I'm saying, if you choose to go ahead and put the amendments in, and granted, this town doesn't have a whole lot, Marcel's correct, we mirrored exactly what the state reductions or changes were, with the exception of you're limiting your service size and some of the enforcement capabilities of the inspector. You're talking three pages of documents. All I'm asking is put some of the burden back on the city if you adopt it, include it in paper format with each permit, or have an initial bar to say that, yes, I have read it on the permit, so the applicant acknowledges it and he knows forthwillen going into it, so we don't have to discriminate against our more senior members of our trade that may not be comfortable going online to a link to find your local ordinance. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody else to comment on this item? Seeing?
Actually, we have done that kind of in the past, and we kind of stepped away from it. We had a stack of like the local, and we used to hand them out. I have no problem doing that again. That's, I mean, because Jeff's right. The average age of a master electrician right now in the state of Maine is fifty-nine years old or fifty-eight years old. So, yeah. It's an aging, it's an aging profession. So, yeah, that's, that's.
We can find a way to provide that information without adding it to the ordinance.
Right, that's what I was going to say, we don't necessarily need an amendment, we'll just do it in-house. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I will ask Councilor Archer to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading of City Code of Ordinances, Adoption of Electrical Standards as Chapter eighty-seven on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Is there a second? Have a motion made by Councilor Archer, seconded by Councilor Doyle. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Motion passes, six-o. So the final reading for this item will be set for March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Next item is another public hearing, and it's Councilor Gay.
Thank you. In two thousand and seventeen, the City of Saco adopted rules to regulate the growing, cultivation, distribution, and medical marijuana in response, in a growing concern that growing operations were being established in buildings and areas not designed for such use. In two thousand and eighteen, the state of Maine ratified the adult use of marijuana for non-medical purposes, recreational marijuana. The state legislature passed rules and laws governing the adult use of marijuana while at the same time revising the medical marijuana caregiver statutes. While reviewing the present ordinance, we also discovered that there was no fee schedule adopted at a refinance in Section one thirty-five dash seven. Considering the changes in the law, city staff concluded that the existing ordinances regulating marijuana cultivation needed to be amended for the following reasons. Section one thirty-five dash three, the revision here seeks to clarify that only parties who grow marijuana for other third parties need to register with the city. This change reflects the growing, processing, and limited amount of marijuana for personal use has been made legal here in the state. Section one thirty-five dash four, the change seeks to classify growing for personal use versus growing for third parties. Growing for personal use is allowed in any residence, but change clarifies that you cannot grow for third parties in residences. The clarification devotes with current city zoning that allows growing in the I-one and I-two zones, but prohibits it elsewhere. Section G is stuck at not related to proposers, intentions of particular section on permitted locations. Section one thirty-five dash five, this change eliminates any penalty for growing in your residence for personal use, but still requires those who grow for third parties to secure and have all times a city license. Section one thirty-five dash six, the first revision eliminates the need for an application and license for those who grow for their own use. The second revision is more in the nature of housekeeping, not substantial. Recommendation, staff supports this amendment. I move to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Gay to open the public hearing, seconded by Councilor Doyle. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Six-o, the motion passes to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, last Councilor Gay?
I move to close the public hearing and further move to set the final reading of the City of Ordinances Revision, Chapter one thirty-five, cultivation and distribution of marijuana on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Counsel, or motion is made by Councilor Gay and seconded by Councilor Doyle. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote. Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Six-o, the motion passes. The final reading of this item will be on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Next item? Councilor Archer? Is another public hearing for a new application for special entertainment permit, River Winds Farm and Estate. Councilor Archer?
Yes. Beth Austin Doing Business as River Winds Farm and Estate, one twenty-one Loudon Road, has applied for a new special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised a public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter ninety-three, Entertainment, subsection ninety-three, two. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion to open the public hearing made by Councilor Archer, seconded by Councilor Gay. Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Six-o, the motion passes to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, Councilor Gay? I mean, Archer?
Yes. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by Beth Doing, Beth Austin Doing Business as River Winds Farm and Estate for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Archer and seconded by Councilor Gay. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, call for a vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Six-o, the motion passes, so Beth Austin will be granted special entertainment permit for the River Winds Farm and Estate. Next item is the second and final reading for the budget amendment number nine, use of surplus. Councilor Smart?
Thank you. On January fourteenth, the city auditors presented a review of the city's finances, including a final total on the unassigned fund balance of the city. The unassigned fund balance came to eleven point twenty-seven percent of the following year's budget. According to the Chapter fifteen, Article four of the City Code, the unassigned fund balance should not exceed ten percent of the following year's budget. With other uses already spoken for, seventy-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six remain in surplus. The budget amendment appropriates the amount remaining, the remaining surplus for items deemed appropriate by Chapter fifteen, Article four. Be it ordered that the city council approves the second and final reading of budget amendment number nine, use of surplus. I move to approve the order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Smart, seconded by Councilor Minthorn. Is there any discussion or comments? Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to move two thousand dollars from minor equipment to the Saco Main Street line item, bringing that to eleven thousand seven hundred, reducing the forty-five thousand down to forty-three thousand.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Doyle, seconded by Councilor Archer. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Just so everyone's aware, this is in reference to what we talked about at the last meeting. For the planters, for the downtown.
Call for a vote on the amendment? Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Smart?
Yes.
The amendment passes, six-zero. Call for, is there any further discussion? Call for a vote on the main motion as amended. Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorn?
Yes.
And Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Motion passes, six-zero, as amended. Next is the administrative update. On what? Can we have public discussion? There was a public hearing at some point, wasn't there?
No, there's no, there's no need, according to our charter, there's no need for a public hearing for a budget amendment. When you have public hearings, they're usually, they're related to ordinances, and you also, for your TIF approval guidelines or credit enhancement agreements, you also have guidelines at the state, you'll do the three-meeting process. But budget amendments only require two meetings, separated by at least seven days, and need at least five of the councillors to vote in favor of it. at least five of the counselors to vote in favor of it.
Well. Ms. Coleman, could you please come to the mic at least so people at home can hear you?
If you look at your Amendment Number Nine, Use of Surplus, you've got your date line. You say new expenses, I get that. Then you say new revenues, 74,866, which is the value of what you're using in surplus. Well, that's not new revenue, that's the use of surplus. So where did you generate the revenue?
It wasn't previously budgeted. You're using money that's in a savings account as a revenue to offset and not increase taxes. Balance is the zero, which shows no use of increasing taxes.
Maybe the term should not be revenue, because revenue means an income. Use of surplus is what you're doing.
Well, it's.
Again, the form is not correctly worded, and if I was to look at it, I would say you generated $74,000. Please.
Counselor Doyle?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I, I think you can, if you look at it globally, we did receive new revenue with the inflated or increased tax revenue amounts that we got in by the evaluation changes from the homeowners when they paid their taxes, and that money that wasn't, that wasn't put into different funds for certain things goes to the, goes to the undesignated fund balance, which in turn is what we're using.
Is the surplus.
That's that undesignedated fund balance. It's not a surplus per se, it's an undesignedated fund balance.
Maybe that's a better word to put there.
And now, now we're taking partial, which is revenues, because it came into that undesignedated fund balance as non-money allocated.
But it still doesn't answer the question. If you were looking at the form, I would say it would be revenue.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, this has been voted on, as is Amendment Number Nine, so we'd have to readdress. Can we just make it a friendly note somewhere that yes, the term was used incorrectly, and there is a better use of the term? However, this has been voted on as new revenues, with the understanding that it was not new revenues.
I mean, it is a new revenue.
Yeah, I, I view it as a new revenue.
New revenue, okay.
As you stated, we've already voted on it, you know, Ms. Coleman's statement is, is taken in point, and we'll move forward, so. You had something to say, too? I guess.
Hi, John Hawkins again. It's good we've got a conscience here that we're trying to get it under 10% surplus, but we've spent over $600,000 on the new budget, there's another 74, and I anticipate our conservative approach to declaring revenue in this current budget will result in greater surpluses. So we're going to have a continuing approach to spending money from here through the end of the fiscal year. I don't know, I see this trend, and I'm a little troubled by it, as a matter of fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get back to the administrative update?
Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to point out that we're obligated to get down to the 10% undesignedated fund balance. We're obligated by our city charter, our code, rather, so, you know, we're obligated to get down to that number unless we look at changing the code.
Right.
So, which, which, this council has talked about changing the code, I believe, as early as, or as latest as last meeting, but just so that we're all clear, we have to get down to that 10%, and this is money that's over that 10% from the last budget year.
That is correct. Now, administrative update.
You already touched on it during the general. I was going to outline the dates that are, we've worked out to accommodate both our, our needs to get the budget presented, and delaying that a little bit so we have a little more time, given the crunch we were under. The next two weeks, I'm meeting with departments and agencies to review budgets before we submit a budget, before I submit a budget at the March 25th council meeting.
That it?
That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counsel discussion and comments?
I've got one.
Counselor Menthorn?
As I pointed out last week, and I'll point out again this week, I do believe we need to amend Chapter 15, Article 4, and raise that 10% number up to 12%. We are going to be bonding a school in the next four to five, hopefully two to three, but maybe four or five years, and if we have our reserve account up at 12%, we should, if we're like South Portland, we'd have a AAA bond rating, which is going to provide much better interest rates, and when you're talking about a 30-year bond, obviously, it's going to be less burden on our residents, so. I, I think we need to have language before us that we can hopefully vote in the affirmative by this council, and have it on the June ballot with the school budget to get our voters to approve going to 12% as a ceiling for the coming fiscal year, beginning July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Menthorn, I just want to respond, this is fiscal policy, it's a code, it's not a charter requirement, so this council can make that decision without having to take it to the public vote in Jan, in June.
So, could we take it up during the budget process?
I would hope that maybe we take it up as a conversation in the budget process, but look to make the changes after the budget process, and focus on the budget for this year, because again, this, this code language doesn't affect anything until after the audit report in January, so it's less of a priority at this point in time, and more of one that we can look to address over the summer.
Thank you. Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to point out two, two things that are going on in the community, well, there's a lot of things going on in the community, but two upcoming events. The Socco Literacy Forum put on by Socco Main Street on March 21st, and also the Cabin Fever Reliever, or Reliva, sorry, on Saturday, March 30th, and those events can be found at the Socco Main Street website and Facebook page and so forth. Thank you.
Is there any other comments on my right, Counselor Gay?
Yes, thank you. There's a Historic Preservation Committee meeting Wednesday at 4:00 PM downstairs in a small conference room.
Thank you. And back to my left, Counselor Smart?
Thank you. First, I just want to say that I drove all the way up Route 1 from here to Portland this morning, and by far, Socco roads were the best of all the roads that I drove on. Also, I'm wondering if the city administrator might be able to address Ms. Coleman's question about the audit in the Downtown Development District, and if not today, maybe we could get an update or a follow-up on that.
Yep, I did send an email saying that I will look to have that followed up with.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Menthorn?
Yeah, two things. One, the Shuttle Bus Zoom executive team will be meeting with Peter Mills to discuss growth opportunities for the shuttle bus on Wednesday. It's a small meeting, and we're hoping to outline our, our plan for future growth for shuttle bus. I am the vice chair of the Board of Directors of that, and we also voted in the affirmative to hire a new executive director, and pending his acceptance of our vote, we will hopefully see him onboard and at a future council meeting introducing himself, hopefully by the 15th of April.
Thank you. Is there any other comments by council? All right, seeing none, I am looking for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Could you read the?
Sure. Be it ordered that the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6(c), Credit Enhancement Agreement with Perspective Business(c), Pre-Sale Agreement for Millbrook Park, Lot 7.
So I have a motion by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by Counselor Copeland, to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 405.6(c). We are now in executive session. Does it vote on it? Oh, my bad. Counselor Archer? Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
And Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Six oh, motion passes. We are now.
Coming back to order, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Minthorne, seconded by Councilor Copeland to come out of executive session. Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session passes, six oh. Is there any motions to be made?
There is a report. I move that the city council amend a certain purchase and sale agreement dated October 1st, 2018 for Lot 7 in Millbrook Business Park, authorizing a 25 percent reduction to the original agreed purchase price set out therein.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Minthorne and seconded by Councilor Smart. Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session passes, six oh. Is there any motions to be made?
There is a report. I move that the city council amend a certain purchase and sale agreement dated October 1st, 2018 for Lot 7 in Millbrook Business Park, authorizing a 25 percent reduction to the original agreed purchase price set out therein.
Second.